The City of Boston's zoning board of appeal hearing of March 26, 2024 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on repeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Okay, just a note that we are a six-member board, and anyone wishing an administrative deferral is free to request one. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start off with the approval of the hearing minutes scheduled for 9:30 this morning. We have minutes from March 12th of this year that are for approval. I will make a motion that the minutes are approved.
May I have a second?
Second, please.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we will begin with the extensions scheduled for 9:30 a.m.
So may I interject, Mr. Stenbridge? So I just want to note that for the board, all of these extensions are for first-time requests for one-year extensions, and if the board is so inclined to make a motion to approve the extensions as they will be read into the record, that would be, we'd be open to that, unless anyone has any specific questions about any of them.
I'm hoping to approve them as they're read into the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I will ask Mr. Stenbridge to read them all into the record. Is that correct, Sam, or should I have, continue the motion first?
Let's have him read them into the record, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
First, we have is case BOA 659702 with the address of 86 to 88 Normal, Washington, North Washington. If I am incorrect, Madam Chair, this is the option.
You're going to just, yeah, you're just going to read them all as is.
Okay. Next, we have case BOA 1101473.
Sorry, let me, let me interject. Can you just read what they're requesting and the time period, you know, what they're requesting relief until, so that's what we're approving? So relief until, you know, May 4th, 2025, et cetera. Does that make sense?
We'll see.
Okay.
So again, so if I go back to the first one, for case BOA 659702, the address of 86 to 88 North Washington, which is asking for a one-year extension to be granted until May 4th, 2025.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1101473 with the address of 473 Meridian Street, which is again asking for a one-year extension until April 8th of 2025. The next, we have, excuse me, case BOA 940697 with the address of 1102 to 1106 R. Blue Hill Avenue, a one-year extension requested until May 7th of 2025. Next, we have case BOA 1183158 with the address of 99 Maverick Streets, which is asking for a one-year extension until August, excuse me, August 25th of 2025. Next, we have case BOA 1038330 with the address of 25 New England Avenue, which is asking for again a one-year extension until June 30th of 2025. Finally, we have case BOA 103, 1038331 with the address of 151 Spencer Street, which is asking for a request, which is requesting an extension until June 30th of 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. So the motion was made and seconded, so I'll continue with the vote. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we move on to board final aperture case scheduled for 9:30. This is case BOA 1455681 with the address of 2 Coppersmith Way. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain case to the board, please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz with the business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston on behalf of the petitioner, Trachila Development. Madam Chair, the board may recall recently they had approved this project for a four-story, three-minute residential dwelling at 2 Coppersmith Way. A number of items under Article 53 were cited, including insufficient lot size. The board voted unanimously to grant the request of relief. We have completed the design review with the Boston Planning and Development Agency as required by the proviso. When we had submitted the matter to ISD for permit, we were cited for an additional item that was not included in either original refusal letter for this project, and that was the lot area for additional dwelling unit was not cited. However, as I sent forth in my communication to the board and to the Inspection Services Department, that violation was correctly not cited because the lot size for this property was below the minimum lot area that would be required anyhow. The board could not grant relief for this project without granting a variance from the minimum lot size requirement, which is 2,000 square feet. This lot is below that, and the provision, as I've argued in the past, the provision for lot area for additional dwelling area really deals with the times when you have a lot that's between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet for proposed uses of three families or essentially the maximum number of units you could allow in that sub-district. As I mentioned to ISD, this is all basically academic at this point. The recommendation by the Boston Planning and Development Agency would eliminate a minimum lot size for this district, but also eliminate the requirement for additional lot area for dwelling units. In consultation with counsel for ISD, they believe that it was appropriate to just present this as board final order and request that the board confirm that all necessary relief has been granted and that no additional relief is necessary. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion?
Oh, a motion to approve. I can see how this was missed, and it's just sort of cleaning up the relief here. So motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Now, we'll move on to the recommendations, excuse me, from the recent subcommittee meeting. I will read the recommendations and give a brief status of them and make, and we can make a motion to approve them all after we finish. And with that, we'll start with case under recommendation scheduled for 9:30. We will start with case BOA, excuse me, case BOA 1563183 with the address of 49 Jeffrey Street. That case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1516277 with the address of 30 Moore Street. It was approved with BPDA review and exploring ways to screen and deck from a neighboring building. And next, we have case BOA 1554364 with the address of 85 Newbury Street, which was approved with BPDA review and Boston Landmark Commission review. Next, we have case BOA 1559488 with the address of 46 Sturgis Road. That was approved. Then we have case BOA 1554305 with the address of 302 Beacon Street, which was approved. Then, next, we have case BOA 1543554 with the address of 94 I Street, which was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1540540 with the address of 384 K Street, which was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1519024 with the address of 41 Dell Avenue, which was approved with no building code release granted and for utilities access for both units. Next, we have case BOA 1550101 with the address of 24 Beaumont Street, which was approved BPDA review to maintain existing side jar setback. Then we have case BOA 1546506 with the address of 18 Monpontset Street, which was approved with provision of no changes to, for the driveway. Next, we have case BOA 1567168 with the address of 410 to 412 Center Street, was approved. Then we have case BOA 1552858 with the address of 45 Lynn Ellen Road, which was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1550759 with the address of 40 Tyndale Street, which was withdrawn. Then we have case BOA 1550175 with the address of 152 LaSalle Street, which was approved. Then we have case BOA 1547600 with the address of 31 Pelton Street, which was approved with BPDA design review to alter to, for renovations and dorms. Then finally, we have case BOA 1542162 with the address of 32 Wally Street, which was approved. And those were the recommendations coming out of the subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, may I have a motion?
I want to approve the subcommittee.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
With that, we will move on to the, excuse me, as I get to the right place. The hearing, the hearing is scheduled for 9:30 a.m. First, we have, before we begin, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe?
Okay, please proceed.
Oh, sorry, Madam Chair, we had, we, there is a hand that's going up and down. It just went down, I apologize. Never mind.
Yep. So with that, we're moving into the hearings scheduled for 9:30. We'll begin with case BOA 1562393 with the address of 735 to 745 River Street. This is an Article 80 case. If the applicant and/or their representative was present, will they explain to the board, please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Suzuro, McDermott, Quilty, Miller, and Hanley, zoning and permitting attorney for the project. With me today is Jonathan Garland from JG Architecture and Design, a project architect, as well as Dr. Gene Bonet and his son Cliff Bonet, who are the property owners and developers. Next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. This is the team who I just referenced. This is a family legacy project. The Bonets are not your prototypical developer. The 745 River Street portion of the project, this is a combined project for 735 and 745 River Street. And the 745 River Street portion of the overall site has been owned by Dr. Bonet for over 20 years and is the, it is the home of his longtime medical practice with the Hyde Park Health Associates, as you can see here, which brings community health services and specialists to an underserved community. Next slide, please. This is just some more background on them. Dr. Bonet was born in Haiti. His practice focuses on cardiovascular disease and diabetes. He was recognized in 2018 by the Boston City Council for his significant contributions to his community. Next slide. Again, just showing some background on the site and the applicant. Next slide. And again, showing what I just mentioned, so just wanted to provide some background to the board. Next slide, please. And this, they also recently purchased the adjacent site at 735 River Street to include in the overall project, which you'll see in a moment. And what I'd like to do now is pass it over to Jonathan Garland, who is our project architect, who can take you briefly through our presentation. Jonathan, I think you're on, you want to take over?
Yeah, thank you, Nick. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, excellent. Good morning, everyone. Next slide, please. So this, this is just a series of existing conditions photographs, as you can see, going up the hill on River Street, and the site in question is where the mature tree is, and you also have the existing building, the medical clinic to the left, and the auto use to the right there. Next. This is from the reverse angle going back down River Street, and you can see the adjacent, or the corner street at Thorn Street. So this is a corner lot condition, and you'll see in the proposed how we're addressing that architecturally. Next. This is a bit further down Thorn Street. A good deal of our proposal does create enhanced public realm streetscape improvements, which you'll see in the further, in the drawings. Next. A little bit more of the site condition. Next, this is down midway through Thorn. This is a condition as you're walking along the sidewalk up toward River Street, or you're on River Street, and you can see the existing health clinic there to the right-hand side. Next. And then this is what we're calling a passageway. It currently exists between the auto use that we plan to improve right there on the left at 735 and an existing four-story apartment building to the right. Next. So this is our existing current day site plan overlaid with the proposed. So you can see underneath is the smaller footprint of the existing building, and then you can also see the auto repair, both in the gray. And then you also see overlaid on top how we are consolidating the lot with this proposed block plan and proposing the new building to front on River Street and Thorn Street with an L or a diagonal-shaped parking tray at surface at grade toward the rear of the site. Next. In terms of our numbers and program, we are proposing a 40-unit residential apartment, rental apartment complex, 18 one-beds, 15 twos, and 7 threes. We are also proposing a little over 4,700 square feet of medical office space within the total lot area of 18,000 square feet. This comes under Article 80, small project review, being under 50,000 square feet. Total FAR 2.61. And then we're also proposing 26 off-street parking spaces, 14 are standard, 12 are compact, a one-to-one bike parking ratio. And then to the right, you will see our IDP, Inclusionary Development Policy, mix of seven units for 17.5% IDP. Next. Nick, I'd like you to take over at this slide.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks, Jonathan. So there is some zoning relief that's required for this project. I will say it's a uniquely triangular-shaped and located site, as you saw. It's got frontages on both River and Thorn Streets, and a lot of zoning requirements that are, the zoning that's needed is a result of that oddly and unevenly shaped lot, and a lot of that specifically supports the zoning relief required for this project due to the site constraints. The MFR use isn't allowed use. We are in a MFR zoning subdistrict, so the use is allowed. We do technically, we do need a use variance for the health clinic. It is an expanded and improved health clinic. At this location, it's a pre-existing non-conformity, like I said, has been there for many years, but the plan is to obviously make it modern, bigger, and have the ability to serve the community even better. So, you know, there is a lot of uniqueness to the site. It's just not a typical triangular, rectangular-shaped site. It's got a lot of topography, site constraints, unique shape, and frontages on multiple roads. But I'm happy to go over this in more detail if there are any questions. Next slide. Jonathan, you want to go back?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, so here we have a couple of glimpses at the architecture. We wanted to create a building that's responsive to the neighborhood, has a clear base, middle, and top, as you can see, with materiality that's consistent with the neighborhood and a punched-window rhythm at the top floor. At the base there in the corners, you can see the entrance to the medical clinic, and that's how we're addressing the corner lot and sort of the flat iron profile of the building from this angle. Next. This is a broader view looking at the building from Thorn Street. There's a four-story apartment building just behind us where this view is taken, and you can see how we're addressing open space for the residents on top of the parking tray with a large gracious outdoor roof deck that can be accessed at the second floor once you're at the residential unit space. The ground floor in the back there is sort of back-of-house space for the medical clinic, and you can just see the stacked vertical rhythm of windows that again is consistent with the area. And then we're also proposing an amply-sized landscape buffer zone right in the foreground, right along Thorn Street. Next. This is a view from River Street. You can see the MBTA bus going by for context. And then we have a series of bay windows to give the architecture some relief and break down the scale. And we're also thinking about engaging a local artist in the area to create some mural expressions at the ground floor of the building. Next. Nick, back to you, I think this is the.
Last slide, Madam Chair, this is just the zoning. Again, you saw it on the previous slide, I'm happy to go over this, but a lot of the zoning needed is due to the site, the site constraints, not only parking loading, but a lot of variances are required as a result of that. I think that's it, Madam Ambassador. If you go to the next slide, it's a thank you slide. You can see the imagery of this great building coming down River Street. And I would just say, Madam Chair, you know, this will help the long-term viability and vibrancy of the site. It's a health clinic and also a lot of existing auto body service use that's, you know, got cars parked all over the site, and they purchased that site and will include it as part of this development to provide for that upgraded medical clinic. And then I think Jonathan did mention, but I know sometimes the board does ask, there is a 17.5% affordability component, including five units at the typical 70%. This is a rental building, one unit at 50% AMI and one unit at 90% AMI. So there's a mix of AMIs there, as well as, you know, over, our IDP of 13% with seven units. So they are very much happy to answer your questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I might have missed this. Where's the, the parking, the driveway curb cut?
Parking will be off of, Jonathan, I can take this quickly. Parking, if you go off, Madam Chair, off of Thorn Street, so it's not off busy River Street. If you scroll on, Madam Ambassador, what you're doing, you can see it right here, perfect. You can see the arrows coming in and out. There's an existing curb cut, we're just relocating. There's an existing curb cut, we're just relocating it off, a little bit further off of the private passageway, which you can see on the right-hand side. So we worked hard with the BPDA and the neighborhood to provide enough parking, but to also make sure it wasn't coming off River Street, which is obviously a busy thoroughfare, and tucking it in off of Thorn Street, which is a much dead-end street and much quieter.
Great, thank you so much. Questions from the board?
I would just, I would just say, I think it's a great project. Certainly much improved over the existing conditions there. And I applaud the IDP units. I guess my only question is, when do you expect to start construction?
So, you know, I think that's always an important question, Ms. Panado. It's always, you know, again, they're not typical developers. They are operating the health clinic on the site now. They will find a location for it during construction. I think the hope is to start construction as soon as they can get financing. But they're committed to, to getting that and working on that. They, you know, they got a lot of discussions with financiers and banks as they make sure that they're able to move forward in the project. So the hope is, you know, we have some backend work to do with the BPDA and other agencies, but the hope is, you know, that they, that they will be able to start construction within the next few years.
Thank you. Thank you. All the questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. This proposal went through a robust BPDA-led community process involving positive community meetings. We understand that residents were pleased with the, what they feel is an improvement to the existing site, as well as the neighborhood health clinic, which will benefit residents in that area. We received one letter of support from the Bell Mel family neighborhood association, which is the active civic group in this area. Unaware of any concerns at this time, and with that, we'd like to refer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Gabriel Cruz from Council of Penn's office. The council would like to go on record that he is in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you do?
Mineo?
Hey.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. The board, this is Mineo Perez representing the carpenters union. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Chris, I sent a message to unmute you.
Hi, everyone. Chris Manadas Lordell, speaking on behalf of GBM portfolio owner, Nubutter. We're incredibly excited about the Bonnet's project here. Very supportive of their vision, great design, fantastic project, and certainly a tremendous improvement over the current auto lot use today. So just wanted to speak in strong support of this project as Nubutter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
No additional raising as Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve. We don't need BPDA design review because it's Article 80, right?
That's right.
It's already been going through Article 80, Mr. Collins. So, I mean, through design review, so you can do continued design review if you'd like.
Yeah, that's fine. Motion to approve with continued design review.
There's a second. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1563863 with the address of 1702 Hyde Park Avenue. This is also an Article 80 case. If the applicant and/or their representative would explain to the board, please?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Excuse me. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jonathan Pogini here on behalf of this development proposal at 1702 Hyde Park Avenue in Hyde Park. With me this morning is Tom Garrity, who is the owner of the property, together with David Freed, who is our team architect. Seventy-two, 1702 Hyde Park Ave is a 22,030 square foot lot. It's located in the local industrial zoning sub-district of the Hyde Park neighborhood. The proposal is approximately 350 feet from the Reedville commuter rail station. And this development will replace a former auto junkyard. The proposal is to construct a new four-story residential building with 44 condominium units, 38 below-grade parking spaces, 50 bicycle spaces, and over 4,000 ground floor commercial space. This proposal underwent an extensive Article 80 process and was unanimously approved by the BPDA board this past August. This proposal will have 32 one-bedroom units and 12 two-bedroom units. The one-bedroom units average approximately 761 square feet. The two-bedroom units average approximately 910 square feet. This development is truly TOD, being situated adjacent to the Reedville commuter rail station. Additionally, this proposal will provide 17% affordability, allowing for seven homeownership units. Also, the development team throughout the process worked together with the BPDA transportation, the city's disabilities office, and the BTD to widen the roadway by allocating a significant amount of our property for the benefit of this city and its residents. This allows for much wider sidewalks, bike lanes, and street trees. We've also committed $10,000 donation to the Boston Parks Department to benefit the Lacono Park, which is located near this proposal. With that, I'll turn it over to David Freed to walk through the designs. We want to thank you for having us here this morning.
Yes, good morning. My name is David Freed and I'm an architect at Chuen Company. And to John's point, we worked with the BPDA as they identified improvements they wanted to make on Hyde Park Avenue and pushed our building back to create a much nicer pedestrian experience with street trees, a much wider sidewalk, a planking bed in front of the building, as well as bike lanes. Next slide, please. We have, as John said, 38 garage parking spaces that are accessed on, on the left side of the building. Next slide, please. We have sort of a mezzanine with a commercial space, about 4,000 square feet. Next slide, please. Our first-floor plan shows, we have a lobby, we have a very generous bike room on our, on our first floor, and we have a roof deck. We have over 3,600 square feet of roof deck space, open space for the unit, for the auto residents on what the first floor and on the roof. Next slide, please. Basically, the building is, is organized around a double-loaded corridor. Next slide. Keep going, please. And then finally, on, on the very top floor, we set back with a, with a generous roof deck. Next slide, please. This is an image of our front elevation and side elevation. The building will be a brick building with brick spandrels that are stacked running bond. We'll have fiberglass panels. And on the backside, it's going to have a more industrial character with corrugated, corrugated siding. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, two questions they have. One is, what is the potential use for the retail space that you are building here? And also, what is the AMI for the two, the seven for the whole community units?
So the, I'll get the AMIs first, Mr. Valencia. The AMIs, it's homeownership, so they're 80% AMI on the condominiums. And with respect to the, we, what we did when you applied ISD, you have to list what the proposed use would be for a commercial space. So we put general, I think it was general retail business. So we're going to look for a local business owner who may want to, who may want to relocate into a newer building with some, with, you know, upgraded space and things like that. So that's where our goal, that is what our goal is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. This project went through a robust BPDA-led community process, starting in the public meetings in the spring of last year. There were members of the HPNA that were in attendance of those meetings, where a lot of feedback was given. We're unaware of any serious concerns at this time, but defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Gabriel Cruz from Council of Penn's office. Council would like to go on record that he is in support of this project. Thank you.
Ms. Minor?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mineo Perez with the carpenters union. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
May I have a call with any raised hands? 617364, go ahead. Hearing none. I'm not sure if you're looking to give testimony. I have no additional raised hands. Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, this is the Nubutter that had their hand raised that wanted to speak.
Okay, I'm sorry. We couldn't hear you previously. Can you, please proceed?
Hi, Madam Chair. I'm hoping you can hear me. I had my hand up.
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, this is, I'll thank you. This is Craig Martin with the Hyphoc Neighborhood Association. And we have been greatly in support of the exterior of the building, which is a brick, and we understand metal some places. And we just kind of, we heard that at one time there was a possibility that we're going to change the exterior. But then it was changed back again to what as we had hoped, the masonry in the metal. We just would like to know, we could have a proviso that the exterior remain as the plan is presented to the board today. And just because at one time there was a thought of a change. The other thought we have, it's across the street, it's a huge proposal. It once had condominiums, and it went before this board for approval with condominiums. Then they changed their mind, and the BPDA did not bring it before this board. BPDA agreed that they could go all apartments, no condos. But we would appreciate it if, as it's presented today, this is a condominium building, if there could be a proviso that this remain condominiums. We don't, we don't have any reason to tell it won't, but just because of our past experience across the street recently.
That's your action.
Thank you.
I could probably address that. No, I'm just--
And, and the final thought, the final thought from the neighborhood is Hyphoc Historical Society and Keep Hyphoc Beautiful organization treasures those cobblestone walls that, that front these parcels. Understand that this, that's not going to be part of this plan. We'd like to know if BPDA could perhaps find a way to implement those historic walls, WPA walls from the FDR era, Labor Initiative Program back in the 30s. And the gorgeous, we'd like to know if there's any way that those could be implemented into this plan. If not, preserved and stored somewhere else, maybe that, that Hyphoc could use in another location, that gorgeous walls and historic. And so, but definitely those two provisos earlier and those thoughts without wrong would be appreciated by the board. Thank you.
Mr. Pogini?
I would just stress that, you know, we, to Mr. Martin's point, we had, the building is going to be built as it looks right now, but as you guys all know on this board, we have to go to continued BPDA design review, so that is their realm, not ours. And the same thing goes for, you know, any sort of adjacent walls or anything like that. So we'll work directly with the BPDA. So I think most of what Mr. Martin raised in his concerns are taken care of through the BPDA design review process.
And since Mr. Hampton is here, I'll trust you'll pass those feedback back to the project manager and any other applicable staff. Thank you. Okay, with that, can you restart your motion, Mr. Collins? Thank you.
Yeah, I can, motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
And Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we have case BOA 1563712 with the address of 18 Intervale Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, they explain the case to the board, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maransky. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Harry Uncarbon Hour, the property owner, who joins us on this hearing today. My client owns the parcel at 18 Intervale Street. Currently on the parcel, there is a dilapidated garage building that has been there for some years that is used only for storage. My client is seeking to erect a new three-story, two-family dwelling with two tandem parking spaces in a ground-level garage. This is an 1,800-square-foot lot, which is an undersized lot in the 3F4,000 zoning district. In light of that fact, my client is proposing only a two-family dwelling. These would essentially be two flats on floors two and three, one-bedroom units, approximately are just over 700 square feet each. The building, as I mentioned, would be three stories, rise to a maximum height of just under 28 feet, 27 feet 8 inches. The violations are all dimensional and attributable to the fact that the building is, as I say, an undersized lot, which is why what's being proposed is classic infill housing. The maximum FAR in the sub-district is .8. The FAR here, what's being proposed, is just about one, almost on the nose. We are aware of the BPDA's recommendation, which puzzled me a bit. I thought much of the recommendation was spot-on in terms, again, of this being classic infill construction on an undersized lot, where it was impossible to meet the dimensional requirements. But then that recommendation concluded with a recommendation of denial and suggesting that the applicant, among other things, maybe considered this being a three-family dwelling by eliminating the ground floor parking. I think on this lot of three-family dwelling would be excessive. It's what my client believed. He settled on a two-family dwelling here, as opposed to a single-family dwelling, because these are supposed to be units for sale, homeownership units, and they would be sort of perfect entry-level homeownership units at just over 700 square feet, one-bedroom units. Whereas if this were a single-family dwelling, obviously, you'd be talking about less affordable in terms of, you know, the sale price of a single-family dwelling. We feel that this is probably the lowest and most reasonable economic use of the land with these two units. And with that, I'll pause, and we'll take any questions that, that members may have.
Thank you. Is the garage parking for one or two vehicles?
So the, the garage, it's, it's a tandem formation, so two cars. But it's, you know, you, you would have to pass through one space to get to the rear space. So it could be considered a single-car parking, but it is laid out as, as two cars in tandem formation.
Other questions from the board?
Can you go over, this is a really small lot. Can, can you go over the dimensional variances?
Yes, certainly. It is a very small lot. It is taxed as residential land rather than as a non-buildable parcel. The violations are for insufficient lot area, 4,000 square feet is required. As I mentioned, this is an 1,800-square-foot lot. This is not a subdivided lot. This lot has been in existence for some time. I went through the assessing records, and it's been independently assessed since at least 1985. There are violations for lot width and frontage. The requirements under the code are for, for a standalone, unattached dwelling, 45 feet of width and frontage. For semi-attached, it would be 25 feet. But for a, for a semi-attached, I'm sorry, for a detached building, it's 45 feet. And the lot width here, as, as the board can see, is about 22 and a half feet. Under the zoning table, even though it's a 3F4,000 lot, 2,000 square feet is required for a one-unit building. As I said, that was an option that my client looked at, but he felt that a, a single-- but he felt that a single-family here might be a bit too pricey for the neighborhood. He felt that providing two smaller units made better sense. As I mentioned, there is a violation for excessive FAR. .8 is what allowed, is what is allowed. What is being proposed is approximately one. There's an insufficient usable open space violation, and I acknowledge that the BPD A recommendation did note usable open space. Each of the units has an approximately 50-square-foot rear deck. In addition to that, the building does have a rear yard behind the area of those decks, which is an additional 200 square feet. In addition, there is an eight-foot front setback. BPD A recommendation also notes the setback and recommends that be brought into modal alignment. My client did do an overlay plot plan, and this building is approximately, in nearly exact alignment, I should say, with three buildings immediately to the right, and then the, one building to the right and the two buildings to the left. So the modal alignment of the nearby structures, the nearest structures, was taken into consideration with that eight-foot setback. And there is a violation for insufficient front yard setback. What is required is 20 feet, which obviously would make the lot unbuildable. The side yards here, the requirement, you have to go into the...
So can you just quickly just say the required and then the actual, you know, so 20 feet? And what is the actual front yard setback?
8.1 feet, which is essentially the modal alignment with respect to the nearest properties. The side yard setback requirements on each side should be at least five feet from a side lot line and 10 feet from an existing structure. This lot, as I mentioned, is 22 and 1/2 feet wide. Each side setback is 3.1 feet. And finally, there's the violation for off-street parking design with the tandem spaces.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you tell us the unit sizes? I'm just interested in this sort of dimensionally and how much living area you would get out of this lot size.
Yes, the first-floor unit, which has more hallway space on that floor, is approximately 700 square feet. And then the second unit on the third floor, because there's less hallway area. And actually, those stairs going out would constitute part of the unit. So that one is more like roughly 750 square feet. And they are proposed as one-bedroom units.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. We heard from a number of neighbors and stakeholders expressing concerns, what they feel is the proposed building being too large for a lot that they believe is too small. Concerns also regarding existing traffic and parking issues on this street. Concerns related to vehicles exiting out of the proposed garage and making it onto the street. Concerns related to the lack of open space on the lot. They felt that this would then lead to people potentially using grills on the proposed rear porches and causing fire hazards. We heard from the local neighborhood association, which is the Normandy Streets Residents Association, and they were in opposition to this project. With that, we'd like to defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Newman, did they mention the reason for the opposition? Was it density or just sort of all of the above that you mentioned?
I believe all of the above.
Okay, thank you.
Joy?
Good morning to the chair, members of the board. My name is Joy Yamagawa, and I'm representing Council Anderson of District 7. The council appreciates the opportunity to address the board regarding the development plans at 18 Intervale Street. And after careful consideration of reviewing the community concerns, I would reconvene you that she cannot support this measure in its current form. The decision was based on multiple emails from the community into the office with concerns about the numerous violations that aren't addressed sufficiently. And this decision was not viewed lightly and is rooted in the councilor's commitment to ensuring responsible and sustainable projects that align best with the community. But she is open to further discussion and collaboration to address concerns. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
This is Michael Cozoo from Project Rye 320A, Blue Avenue. We appreciate that developer met several times with both the abutters through the mayor's office meetings and also through the Intervale-Normandy Street Neighborhood Association. However, eight abutters who live right on Intervale Street on that block are opposing it. We should note that this lot used to be part of a broader lot, 3,600 square feet, according to BPD A records. There used to be a two-family house on the broader 3,600-foot lot. This lot was subdivided, and the previous house was on the other side of the driveway that now exists. The proposal puts the house right on top of the driveway. And the developer sidestepped the question. So it is 3.1 feet from the property line, but then it's less than five feet away from the new, from the, from the abutters that has been there forever. So there's, I'm not going to restate all the opposition, but this, the building is on a small, narrow lot that's really unbuildable with the size of the building that you're talking about. Thank you.
No additional raised hands? Do you have anywhere else? You're all set.
Any other raised hands? Okay, Mr. Pogini, would you like to address any of that?
It's George, George Maransky. I had him here. That's okay. At least you confused me with somebody who's very good at his job.
I'm sorry.
My client certainly is aware of the concerns. And I guess what I can say, being honest, is he would certainly consider a single-family if the board is not of the predisposition to approve this. But again, a single-family here would have really all of the same violations. It would simply result in one unit that really wouldn't be much smaller. Two bedrooms here are being proposed on the lot. In terms of usable open space, 650 square feet is required. That's nearly 1/3 the size of the lot. So every violation would be applicable to a single-family. The only difference is that a single-family would have, again, maybe one more bedroom, and it would be less affordable in terms of being a single-family rather than a condominium unit. So I understand the pressures on the board. I understand what the concerns are as does my client, and will certainly accept any decision that the board makes and proceed accordingly.
And so with respect to setbacks, Mr. Maransky, it doesn't sound like if you went to one family, you would adjust setbacks at all.
No, it gets to, you know, the question of is this a buildable lot or is this not a buildable lot? As I said, it has been taxed as residential land as a separate parcel. I went back to 1985, which as far as the online records go. I don't see any other reasonable economic use for the land. I don't think there would be support from BTD or the Transportation Department to use it as residential parking. So it either is unused, unusable and unused land or a one or two-family. As I said, my client adhered to family simply in terms of trying to create two units that are more approachable in terms of affordability.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny without prejudice. I think it is a small lot, and the density being proposed here is excessive.
Is there a second?
I will second that. My concerns are more with the dimensional standards and trying to accommodate parking on this site with the lot width and sort of creating a separation where the cars would be backing out from the building to the street.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Amen.
Next, we have case BOA 1502445 with the address of 51 St. Margaret Street. If the applicant and their representative are present, will they explain the case to the board, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is John D. Barry with Alarson's. This is John D. Barry located at 10 Forbes Road in Braintree, Mass. 02184. With me today on this particular project is 686 Architects, located at the same office address. And presenting with me today is Principal Manager of 686, Christopher Drew. 51 St. Margaret Street is located within the 2F5, is located within a 2F5,000 sub-district of the Dorchester neighborhood. The proposal here is to erect a three-story, two-family with parking at grade. Essentially, the violations are all dimensional. The lot size here is 2,520 square feet, where the code would recommend 5,000. The lot width here that's recommended is 40. What this site provides is 35. The lot frontage that's required by the code is 40. What this site proposes, what this site has is 35 feet as well. The front yard, what the code would propose is 15 feet. What we have here is eight feet. The rear yard would, the code would recommend 20. What we have here is 13 feet. The FAR that is recommended is .5. What this proposal has is a 1.02. There is a violation in height as far as stories because the first floor is all parking at grade. So it is a three-story building. The, notice that went out after a revision that was made. It still lists the building a violation in feet, but that is not correct. What the code recommends here is 35 feet. And there was a revision that was made to drop a unit here and drop a floor, which ultimately lands the building at 30 feet, which is under the feet violation of 35 feet. With that, I'm going to hand this off to Christopher Drew to just run through the plans.
Thank you, JD. Next slide, please. So again, you can see the full development on the left. This is existing two-family on the right. Next slide, please. So the first floor is on the right-hand side, which has two parking spaces as well as a bike park and the two bikes. You come in the front west of you, you go up the stairs, actual common stairwell, where we've got three bedrooms, two baths, open kitchen, living dining, secondary egress out the rear with a, with a deck. Next slide, please. The third floor is very similar to the second floor. Three bedrooms, two baths, open kitchen, living dining room, some mechanical space. Next slide, please. Just the proposed elevation, again, showing it in context with the existing two-family to the right. Next slide, please. Just the right-side elevation. And you can see the decks in the back, the bay in front. Next slide, please. And then we have the rear elevation to the right side and the left-side elevation on the left side of the page. Next slide, please. And these are just some contextual renderings, kind of showing the building in link with everything else. Next slide, please. And just looking back to St. Margaret. At this point, we'll be happy to open up to any questions. Collins, you go first.
And Madam Chair, very quickly, and members of the board, I forgot to mention, this is a vacant lot. It is not the result of a subdivision. And the unit's range in size from 1,009 square feet to 1,019 square feet.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none? May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted two abutters meeting. And the second one on, looks like December. There were some initially concerns in the first meeting regarding, they felt that the building was being shoehorned into a very narrow parcel. It sounded to understand that there's some changes were made. In the second abutters meeting, there were still some concerns raised regarding that they felt was trees potentially being removed as well as the loss of green space and what they felt would be another absentee landlord in this area. The applicant did go before the McCormick Civic Association, which voted to support this proposal. With that, I'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Ramis from Council Fitzgerald's office. RF, RF's would like to go on record in opposition of this proposal. Thank you.
Do you, are there any reasons that the councilor has?
Mainly, um, community concerns about it being too, a lot too small for that area. Sorry.
Thank you. Just got any other raised hands?
I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion for approval with BPD A review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Excuse me. Next, we have case BOA 1513515 with the address of 313K Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, will they explain the case to the board?
Good morning. My fiance and I live in a three-family condo. We're the top unit, and we already have stairs that were built into the...
May I just state your name and address for the record?
Oh, sorry. My name is Alicia Powder, and I live at 313K Street, Unit 3. So it's three condos. I'm on the top unit. The stairs already built outside, going up to the roof when we bought the unit, and we're lucky to put a roof deck on top. We've gone through the abutters meeting process and got, and there were no objections during that meeting.
Can you just stay on that slide with the one before? So what are the dimensions? And is that the back, back of the unit where the roof deck is proposed?
Yes, it's on the back of the unit. It's not on the street side. And then it's 20 by 25.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none? May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted an abutters meeting on December 18, 2023. During that time, no concerns were raised in the meeting. The Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, which is the active civic group in this area, is on record in opposition, as is their policy with all roof decks in their catchment area. Our office has not received any letters of support or opposition at this time. With that, I'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Laura T. Edana from Council Flynn's office. Council Flynn would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from both neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, who are also opposed to additional roof decks in the neighborhood. Council Flynn has a long-standing policy of opposing roof decks in their residential areas of South Boston due to years of negative impacts on the quality of life of our seniors, persons with disabilities and young families due to midnight parties at all hours and trash removal issues originating from roof decks. These issues have negatively impacted the quality of life of neighbors throughout South Boston for years with a changing town Boston for years, with a changing town and South Boston having become a destination on the weekend for young people. These issues were exacerbated during the pandemic and have continued its aftermath. Lastly, additional roof decks in the community will not address our affordable housing crisis, and it is difficult to determine what kind of hardship that a roof deck will require relief for from the city's corner. So, thank you. So, Nicole.
Thank you. Can anyone...
I'm listening, please.
I don't know if this is a question for the applicant, Mr. Newman, or Laura, but as to roof decks in the vicinity, like, do your Butters have roof decks? What is the situation on that block? I don't know if that's a question for you, Ms. Powder.
Oh, there are other roof decks in the area.
And what about your Butters? Are you aware whether your Butters have roof decks?
I'm not aware.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, so I think the BPDA memo points to other roof decks on the block, so I am going to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1521565 with the address of 409 to 415 West Broadway. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board?
Certainly. Good morning, Mr. Sembridge, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the Law Firm of Dane Torpey, 175 Federal Street, Suite 15, Boston. At the outset, one, I'd like to wish the board and all on this call a Happy Easter. Beyond that, I wanted to also point out for the board that per a December 7 refusal letter, December 7, 2023 refusal letter, some of the violations were rescinded, specifically an Article 68, Section 8 extension into the rear yards greater than 1,000 square feet conditional was rescinded, and an Article 68, Section 8 insufficient rear yard setback was rescinded in that updated refusal letter. I am pleased to be representing the client in this particular matter. This is the South Boston Community Health Center, which has serviced the South Boston community for decades. Presenting this morning is Bill Halpern. His name comes up as Susan La Begaliere because he had to find a person who would definitely get him onto this hearing appropriately, but they are both with the South Boston Community Health Center. Bill is the president and CEO. Also, there are several lawyers from my law firm, Dane Torpey, who are observing this hearing this morning to see the great work of this board. And the architect and the larynx group is John Zickowitz, who will be presenting the plans. I would like to start, if I might, with having Bill Halpern give the board the setting for what is being proposed by the South Boston Community Health Center. So, Bill, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster, and good morning to members of the board. And my apologies, we have a little technical issue here, so that's why I'm showing up with Susan. The chair certainly knows me and Susan and would know that I am not Susan's son. Anyway, South Boston Community Health Center has been servicing South Boston for over five decades, actually, and has consistently grown in my 26 years as the CEO, grown in both volume and location with... We originally, we moved from into this building about 28 years ago. We've expanded into the Seaport area where we have a nursing care center. And the proposal before you today is to add an addition, a two-story addition, two floors to our existing structure built out over our existing parking lot on Silver Street. So, no impact on our main entrance of 409 West Broadway. There's really a couple of reasons why we really sort of desperately need to expand. First, you know, we learned a lot of lessons during the pandemic, and one of them was the value of social distancing and keeping people with respiratory and communicable diseases sort of separated. And this will allow us to do that because we'll be adding 11 additional exam rooms and also freeing up space in our existing basement that will also add clinical capacity. The other, so it'll improve patient flow and allow us to see more patients. We project on the order of about 5,000 visits. We could, in terms of additional capacity, much-needed visits, I might add. And secondly, during the pandemic and continuing to this day, the behavioral health needs of this community have, and really the entire city, but particularly South Boston, have simply exploded. And we're having a very hard time meeting that capacity. You know, we hire social workers or therapists, and their panel is full in less than a month. And so that, this addition will allow us additional space so we can help accommodate those behavioral health needs. And, you know, we've had two neighborhood meetings, and I think they were each of the associations, CitySide and St. Vincent's. We're in favor of this, and it's really, I mean, at its core, it will allow us to continue to service the needs of the community, which is what we've done for over five decades.
Bill, I'm going to let, I'm, thank you for that, and you can see that Bill, over his many years of service, is very passionate about serving this community and what the South Boston Community Health Center can offer. Bill has gone into a lot. I can have, Madam Chair, I can have the architect, Mr. Zickowitz, go through the drawings, the plans, if you would like. What's the pleasure of the board, Madam Chair?
Thank you. No, access to care is critical, and expanding service is important. So briefly, you know, briefly just walk through the violations. I think that would help the board, just see where we are.
John, will you unmute yourself?
Yes, I am, I'm here. Yes, thank you very much. The addition itself is approximately 96 feet by 58 feet, 5,600 square feet, a floor for a total of 11,000 square feet. As Bill mentioned, the addition is at the second and third levels, so we're maintaining the existing surface parking that's accessible off Silver Street. The dimensional violations, we're required to have a FAR of 1.5. With this addition, we are at 2.77. We have an open dwelling violation there. It's required to have 200 square feet per dwelling unit. Obviously, there are no dwelling units here, so we have zero open space. A front yard setback off West Broadway is five feet. The building, the existing building is, comes up to the property line on both Front Street and F Street on the side because this is a corner lot. The front street setback also applies to the side yard, so we are at zero there as well. We are, extension of a non-conforming use, we're allowed to be 25% or less. We are at 26.7%. The Health Center itself is a forbidden use in this area. There is no loading dock, and it's required to have 53 parking spaces, which is one space for 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. We have 21 total spaces in the back. Like I said, we're maintaining what's there. We only, we will lose four spaces due to the structure and the support of the upper floors, but we're primarily maintaining what's existing on the back parking lot.
And just before, Madam Chair, I turn it back to you for any questions or comments. Support, for sure, we appreciate, but I wanted to underscore what Mr. Halpern said, that they met CitySide, St. Vincent, and with their Silver Street neighbors, and I'm not aware of any objections to the ruling. With that, Madam Chair, I turn it to you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, ONS hosted a Butters' meeting on December 7th, 2023. All accounts was a very positive meeting with many residents appreciative of the vital services that the Neighborhood Health Center provides to the community. CitySide Neighborhood Association felt that the Butters' meeting was so well-received that they did not require the applicant to provide a formal presentation to the membership as a result, and the CitySide Civic Association indicated that they wished the proponent the best of luck. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. We have no letters of support or opposition as of last night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam... Sorry. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura Toldana for Council Flynn's office. I am writing in support of the proposed project on 409 and 415 West Broadway, which is the site of the South Boston Community Health Center. This will expand the South Boston Community Health Center by adding two floors to the clinic and will allow the clinic to increase its capacity and better serve our neighborhood. This project will add 11 new exam rooms to the South Boston Health Community Center, which will allow them to free up the basement for more clinical services, and will help accommodate approximately 5,000 more visits per year to the Health Center. The additional space will also improve patient flow and infection control, and this will allow the South Boston Community Health Center to space out patients and limit the spread of respiratory diseases. This will ultimately improve patient access to the South Boston Community Health Center and allow the Health Center to serve its patients efficiently and effectively. Over the past 50 years, the South Boston Community Health Center has provided important healthcare services in South Boston, serving 70,000 visits per year that includes families, our seniors, persons with disabilities, immigrant neighbors, communities of color, and our most vulnerable in public housing. At the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, South Boston Community Health Center was the first community health center in Silver County to provide vaccines for seniors and deliver a total of 35,000 doses to the community. South Boston Community Health Center is an important institution in South Boston, and this proposal will allow them to provide more services to its patients and continue its mission. I hope the CDA will approve this application. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me at flem@boston.gov or Thank you.
Thank you. Madam?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, my now presence represented the carpenter's union. Would like to go on record in support of this project.
No additional raised hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review with some attention to parking and loading layout.
May I have a second?
Second, I please.
Mr. Sembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, Bill.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, member of the board. Again, Happy Easter to all. Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1554723 with the address of 40 Brookley Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board, please?
Yes, good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're attorney, Ms. McDermond, Quilty, Miller, and Hamley here in Boston. With me today is Rick Howes and Mosin Viselli, third company, the owner of the hotel, Connie Sheen, Shaheen, who's the general manager at the existing hotel, and Jack Vardy, who's the restaurant operator. Just very quick background, Mount Vernon purchased the building about 10 years ago, and they've done a bunch of work to the building. Additional renovations were performed in 2018 to open the Revolution Hotel, which opened in December of 2018. And the Cosmica Restaurant, which is a restaurant at the site already, opened in December of 2019. It's been a real positive for folks in the neighborhood and a great operator, and this is a long-existing hotel and hospitality building. Next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. So this is just showing you the space. This is in the lower level of the existing hotel. The proposal here is to keep providing this great kind of hospitality that they've been providing for many years at this location, and they're looking to change the occupancy to include a restaurant use with live entertainment after 10:30 p.m., specifically on this garden level only, which is the top right of the floor plan here. This is currently used as co-working space for guests of the hotel, but they do use it actually also for private events, and they do serve alcohol down there already as part of those events. Next slide, please. And this is just to start to see the outline of the space here. You know, this is looking to make this about the use of the space as part of the hotel, but connected with that existing restaurant that's already there. There would be food and full dining available in the space. Everything would be out of the restaurant kitchen, the Cosmica Restaurant kitchen that is already there, and part of that kitchen is actually already down here already. You can see where it says "backup house" on the top left of the screen as well. This would be an adult-oriented plan for this live entertainment that they would be looking for in this lower-level space. They kind of want to create, you know, a happening in the Revolution Hotel, so to speak. It would be for hotel tenants, hotel occupants, but also for the neighborhood. And you can see here the space is about 2,340 square feet. It would hold up to 156 occupants. There are 92 seats, there is a full bar, and this would again be seen as an amenity to the existing restaurant people that's there now. You can see on the screen on the top right where it says "entertainers DJ two people", to the right where it says "stair A" on the screen. That is where the live entertainment would be located, so it's not really a stage. It's meant to be intimate music, DJ, instrumental, perhaps vocal, for, you know, for instance, like a jazz trio or a breakfast brunch with a DJ and also kind of a supper club-type concept. So, not a nightclub by any means, and there isn't even a set dance floor that, you know, they are looking to provide dancing if that's warranted, but there is, this is not like a, you know, a stereotypical nightclub, per se. There's not a dance floor or anything like that in the space, as you can see here. Next slide, please. Just two more slides, Madam Chair. This is a slide that just shows access to the space through the hotel restaurant. So, the previous slide was the lower level where the space is, right, for this live entertainment use. But I think importantly, in to show not only to the neighborhood but to the board how folks will access the space. And so you can see here, this is the ground level of the hotel. You can see on the right-hand side, top right, that is the entry to the hotel from Berkeley Street. And then you can see this arrow here, that checked kind of grid view on the lower right is an existing restaurant patio. And what is proposed is for folks to come in through the hotel-restaurant courtyard into the hotel balcony, down the stairs to that lower level, along this kind of macaroni-shaped staircase that you can see here, it looks like an upside-down slinky downstairs into that space. And so that's helpful for the board to understand because this live entertainment is not on the ground level, it's not, has no access to the outside, it's actually in the lower level. There will be extensive sound attenuation down there. There are windows down there to that space, but these are just, you know, kind of vent windows that bump out. They're not really operable. There will be acoustical treatment over those windows as well. Obviously, you know, they want to make sure that the space and the... Obviously, you know, they want to make sure that the space and the sound coming from it is consistent with the hotel and hotel guests and their experience first and foremost. So at the end of the day, it's all about the hotel guests. But also, you know, any concerns that we heard from the neighborhood, from sound, travel, noise are issues that the hotel, you know, has as well because the nearest neighbors and the abutters are actually their own hotel guests. Hours of operation, the last thing they'll say is proposed is 4 to 1 a.m. However, most nights it will close by 11 p.m. Depends again on the night and environment. Obviously, you know, Wednesdays and Thursdays probably earlier, Fridays and Saturdays probably later. And likely would be operating from Wednesday to Sunday to start. And then I think, Madam Ambassador, the last slide is just showing our refusal letter. If you could scroll down, please. Because this is an existing hospitality use and because there is an existing restaurant on the space, we do need a conditional use permit for change in a non-conformal use by expanding that space. And then the restaurant with the live entertainment after 10:30 p.m. is a conditional use, which we would seek as well. But I think, you know, as I mentioned, you know, under the conditional use permit standards, we, you know, there's a lot of to like here from an existing standpoint and from the operator. The operator is Jack Vardy, who owned and operated the Beehive right up the street, which had live entertainment for 17 years with no issues with the neighborhood and had a much larger occupancy. So the character and fitness of the operator is pretty good here as well. So I know there's a lot of information, but myself and the team are happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to clarify, so presently, does the existing restaurant have a live entertainment license? And no?
Yes.
Okay.
The Cosmica Restaurant, which is on the ground floor, does not have a live entertainment license. This would be in addition to that component, which would be downstairs. So no, it does not.
Okay, so the rest of your answer was that the request is strictly for the garden level, not the ground level, or?
That is, absolutely, yes. It would just be in that lower level on the floor plan. And if you actually, Madam Ambassador, if you scroll back up to the next page up, you can, I believe, see the restaurant space here is on the left-hand side, lower-left-hand side into the patio. So it's already there. That's where the existing restaurant is. The live entertainment component is, as shown on the plans, submitted to ISD and the board only on that lower level.
Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office deferred to the judge from this board. ONS conducted a positive community process. There were some concerns raised from neighbors regarding noise pollution. The applicant was able to address those concerns and explain their process, how they will address that. The applicant then went on to meet with the Ellis Neighborhood Association, we understand, as well. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura Tolanana for Council of Flynn's office. Council of Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process. The council respectfully requests that the team continue to work closely with neighbors in the event of any noise complaints or other quality of life issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board. Mine of course here representing the carpenter's union. I'd like to say kudos to Bruce Presley, Mount Vernon, for the great outreach to the community, and we're here to support his petition. Thank you.
Go ahead, Eric. Can you state your name and address?
Yep, my name is Eric Schweizer. I am the property owner over at 15 Gray Street, Unit 1. I wanted to call to oppose this motion. We've had tons of issues recently with the hotel and their guests who have, and their employees, in fact, who have consistently been coming out into the front steps of our property doing illicit activities. We've also had issues in the past with noise complaints from the hotel, particularly on New Year's Eve, when music was directly affecting our quality of life at our unit. This included, you know, the walls shaking, very, very loud noises going on until 1 and 2 in the morning. So therefore, I oppose the motion. Thank you.
Cindy, can you state your name, address, and tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Sure. This is Chris Pappas. I'm president and CEO of the Massachusetts Lodging Association, and we would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. My, Eric, my, Madam Chair, no additional raise stands. Thank you. Would the applicant just like to briefly respond to the abutter on Gray Street before we make a motion?
Sure, Madam Chair, that's the first that I've heard of it. But, you know, I know that Connie from the Revolution Hotel, who's the general manager, is on with me. Perhaps Connie, I don't know if you are listening in, if you'd want to respond at all to any of those comments. Are you there, or Rick, or anybody from Mount Vernon?
Yes, this is Rick Howes with Mount Vernon Company. We're the ownership team for the Revolution Hotel. I apologize to our neighbor for any problems that he's had and want to emphasize that there's hotel staff available 24/7 to address any concerns. With respect specifically to the space downstairs, we are going to be putting in extensive soundproofing to minimize any noise leaving the space itself. Our first and foremost concern is the hotel business, and this use with the live entertainment in the basement is really just an accessory to the hotel. It's not the primary business. So it is in our best interest to keep the noise level down and to also work with the neighbors and be good neighbors when there are issues or complaints, New Year's Eve or any other time.
So it sounds like you would be available to your neighbor to address these concerns offline?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all.
Next is case BOA 1554317 with the address of 465 Metro Street. It's the applicant and/or the representative present. Would they explain the case to the board, please?
Jack Moriarty, Flatley Company. Thank you, Mr. Sted -- excuse me, Stenbridge. And Madam Chair, members of the board. This space is office space in the existing outer building at 465 Metro Street in Childstown. It's on the campus of the Schrafts factory properties. The property has been owned by the Flatley Company since 1984. The complex, the 465 Metro Street property, which just, 425, I'm sorry, Metro Street property, the old Domino Sugar facility, which just went through an extensive BPDA master plan and was approved 3/14. And the area that's in question here is office space. It's going to be utilized for, basically, it's not therapeutic purposes, it's more counseling by ABA Centers of America. I can briefly just read their mission. Their mission is to provide clients and their families with individual and comprehensive care, help to navigate the social, emotional communications of daily living and experience for those suffering with autism. These are mostly adolescent children and teenagers, and this was all being somewhat of their corporate offices. And the violation was basically because it's over the, it's in the gateway, deregulation, sub-district. It says the proposed use is forbidden. And it's really not a procedural space. It's more of an interview space and a counseling area for families with adolescents and children.
And your renovation, it sounds like the work is primarily or strictly interior? Is that correct?
It's all interior. It's all interior. And there's really nothing actually there that I would consider like medical procedural use. It's more interview space, one-on-one social workers.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Sean Green with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters' meeting was held for 465 Metro Street on January 25. Since that time, this office has received zero letters in opposition and zero in support. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you. A minor?
Thank you, Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board. This is mine of course representing hundreds of Indian carpenters delivering work across the city of Boston. And I want to go on record in support of this petition.
Thank you. No additional raise stands. Would I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do I understand 99 Elm wished to defer?
Yes, Madam Chair, Kevin Joyce, attorney of office of Boston, and I can request a deferral.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge, if you could read that into the record?
That would be, that request will be for case BOA 1556234 with the address of 99 Elm Street. Would you go ahead, Mr. Joyce, and explain?
This is Kevin Joyce, attorney of office of Boston. At this time, I request a deferral of this matter.
Samantha, do you have a date?
I apologize, Madam Chair. We're pulling that up now. I believe the date we have is May 7.
That's fine with me. Pleasure with the board.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer until May 7.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
With that, excuse me, with that, we'll move on to the hearing scheduled for 11 a.m. We'll also ask if there are any requests for withdrawal or deferral hearing cases in this time, correct?
Is Mr. Lyons requesting a deferral? John Lyons?
Johnny, can I meet with? Hi, Johnny. I sent a request. I'm meeting. Okay.
Are you seeking that deferral?
Yes, I am. Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you. My name is John Lyons. I'm an attorney representing the proponent.
Just give us the address first so we can read it into the record.
40-42 Temple Street, Mattapan.
Mr. Stenbridge?
So this request will be for case BOA 1515203 with the address of 40-42 Temple Street. Go ahead.
Good morning again. My name is John Lyons. I'm the attorney for the proponent. We have had two abutters' meetings, one A-Boy meeting with Lowell Mills and a general meeting with Lowell Mills and register associations. Project has been modified since the initial filing. And based on those discussions, we are evaluating, making some additional modifications. So at this time, I'd like to defer so that we can meet again with both of those associations. And we need to have a final discussion, actually the first discussion, but the final word on the matter comes from the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council. Although we don't meet with them, we have to communicate with them. So we need some more time and
Okay.
I think realistically, given the fact that Easter is coming up and the holiday after that, getting the work done and meeting with all three of those groups, we should probably look at early June if that's possible.
June 4.
Madam Chair, we have a date of June 4.
Mr. Lyons?
That'll be fine. Thank you very much.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to June 4.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from reluctant law firm?
Madam Chair, I also wanted to note that when this interpreter is on.
Okay, they are available. They are, they are available.
Yes, now.
Okay, if that's the case, then we will take 61 Linden Street out of order. Thank you.
We're going 261 Linden Street?
Just to confirm, the interpreter is present, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just make sure we're pausing to give them a chance to interpret.
Hi, Son. Ma'am, can you hear us? Your channel is...
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
All right, perfect.
Okay. Please proceed, Mr. Stenbridge.
261 Linden, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Next will be case BOA 1341131 with the address of 61 Linden Street. And we'll ask for the applicant and the representative and/or the representative and the interpreter to explain to the board, please.
Is the interpreter available? Are you, can you translate?
Yes, and...
Are you translating? Will you translate?
So we come to the case of... Chúng tôi nói về cái cây của cái địa chỉ với 61 Linden Street. Và chúng tôi trình bày cho cái người là vai cái trên cái này thì chúng ta mắc đau. Yes, we can start.
Okay, is the applicant present?
Yes, I'm sorry, just, um... Excuse me, this is Mai Lam, permanent consultant for the homeowner. I apologize, I was trying to log in. I am here representing the homeowner, consultant, and developer for 61 Linden Street. And we are proposing to demolish a one-story single-family in, on Linden Street and construct in a six-unit family building. We have gone through three sessions of abutters' meetings and three rounds of meetings with the Fields Corner Civic Association.
Can you, sorry, pause so the interpreter can translate?
He's, you, it's good, you need to translate again. He's speaking English. I don't know.
I'm sorry, is there, we're translating for abutters who need Vietnamese. That's why you're here, is that correct?
So that's mean I translate that into Vietnamese?
Correct.
Okay, sure. Okay, so I will, just, he talked a little bit and I will start interpreters and then he stopped and then I start, right?
Do you need him, do you need him to start over?
Yes, I think so.
Sorry, please, please start over.
Sure, my name is Mai Lam. I'm representing the developer at 61 Linden Street. She is a resident of the street, across the street. And we are proposing to demolish a single- And we are proposing to demolish a single-family and, uh, construct a six-family unit.
Tôi là đại diện của cái, cái cô tên gì nhở?
姓Phi Bình Nhuyn.
Ờ, Phi Bình Nhuyn ở cái số 61 Linden Street và chúng tôi đề xuất cho cái việc và, ờ, xây dựng, làm mới lại cái, cái địa chỉ này thành một cái nhà cỏ xấu cái, cái đơn vị bên trong.
Uh, we have gone through, uh, three abutter meetings as well as three rounds of, uh, meetings with the Fields Corner Civic Group. Uh, we believe we have responded, um, favorably to their request to make improvements to the project.
Chúng tôi đã, đã trải qua ba cái giai đoạn, theo cái đề nghị và chúng tôi nghĩ là chúng tôi đã hoàn tất được các yêu cầu để cho cái dự án này.
The biggest change we were able to accommodate is to reduce the number, the number of bedrooms from eighteen bedrooms to twelve bedrooms. Essentially, when we applied, we applied as six three-bedroom units. Now, we are asking for six two-bedroom units.
Ờ, cái điều chỉnh lớn nhất là chúng tôi đang giảm cái số lượng phòng ngủ xuống. Đầu tiên, chúng tôi dự kiến là một dự án sáu phòng, một phòng ngủ thì bây giờ là sáu phòng có hai phòng ngủ.
We are also adding in green space in the backyard as well as, uh, constructing a impervious driveway for better drainage as requested by the abutters and the Civic Association.
Chúng cũng đã tăng cường cái mảng xanh phía sau cũng như cái khu công cộng chung theo yêu cầu của, 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 của đơn vị yêu cầu.
And, uh, with that, uh, we ask for the board's, um, approval to proceed.
Và vì với hiện đáp ứng như vậy, chúng tôi mong muốn là ủy ban để đồng ý để chúng tôi tiến hành cái dự án này.
Just to clarify, you said impervious earlier, did you mean pervious?
Pervious, excuse me, pervious.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Chúng nó làm rõ hơn cái yêu cầu là tiếp theo đúng không?
Okay, uh, questions from the board?
Câu hỏi với từ ủy ban.
Uh, can you talk about open space and how you're addressing open space on the site?
Ừm, có thể nói về cái không gian mở và mình tiến hành cái không gian mở như thế nào.
Sure, the, uh, I think what you see there is, um, is a site plan. Uh, the improvements we made based on, uh, feedback from the neighborhood is that we created a, um, bench and sitting area in the rear of the building, in the rear of the lot, uh, left corner. Um, we...
Đã cái, cái, dựa vào cái khoảnh hồi của các cư dân xung quanh. Chúng tôi có nhìn vào cái bản đồ này, có thấy là chúng tôi đã mở ra cái rộng, cái không gian ở phía sau như vậy.
That area probably is fifteen by ten feet, uh, has a few benches, uh, and is, um, will be grass and, um, and, um, landscape.
Ờ, nó sẽ kéo trường khoảng mười feet và sẽ có thêm cái cảnh quang phía sau.
Can you talk about the, the, uh, dimensional variances, particularly the side yard setbacks?
Sure.
Nó thêm về cái, cái chiều, những cái chiều kích đấy xung quanh, như cái bản vẽ này.
Sure, the, um, the front yard, um, setback, uh, the zoning is calling for fifteen. We are providing nine point one seven. The side yard is calling for ten, uh, ten feet, uh, we are providing seven point eight. And the rear yard, um, is calling for thirty feet and we are providing thirty-four.
Thank you. Cái thâm số chúng tôi đã đáp ứng theo yêu cầu của cái, cái yêu cầu, giống như vậy rồi.
Can you talk about the other, um, types of housing on the, on that block? Are they generally one, two, three? Are there other six-unit buildings on that block?
There's, there's a mix on that block. Um, there's, I would say a combination of threes and twos, uh, three families and two families on that block with some, uh, single-family scattered throughout.
Các công, các đơn vị nhà, nó đã tính toán cho gia đình một, một gia đình, hai gia đình bên trong rồi.
And Mr. Hampton, are you available to speak to the BPDA's recommendation?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. Uh, we recommend a denial without prejudice just based on the plans that we have where they're knocking down a building, uh, putting up a six-family, which, as you saw in our recommendation, really isn't the concern. The concern is open space. And what's there now is going to be even exacerbated even more, uh, with this, uh, proposal. Uh, the other thing that is not shown on their plans in ours, nor was it shown today, was this ten-by-fifteen area where in the back left, it's going to be green space. Uh, as you see up on the screen now, that has two parking spaces right there. So, um, if there is going to be green space, that's something that we haven't seen. Um, but our big concern is the, the amount of paving on this site, the lack of useful open space.
Với cái, cái bản vẽ như vậy, chúng tôi có một số lo ngại về cái việc mà chúng ta hoặc phá cái, cái căn nhà cũ cũng như là xây một cái mới cho sáu gia đình. Và cũng thêm là cái, cái mảng xanh ở phía sau, chúng tôi cũng lo ngại về cái mảng xanh đó, nó, nó sẽ không được như mong đợi. Đó là cái, những cái lo lắng mà chúng tôi.
Okay, are there other questions from the board?
Câu hỏi gì nữa không?
Hearing done, may I have a public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judge on this board. Um, this will be a lengthy community process. Uh, due to some personnel changes, we don't have a lot of information on this. We are aware that some people have raised concerns though regarding setbacks, uh, but the Fields Corner Civic Association indicated that they are in support of this proposal. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Rebus from Councilor's Office.
I'm sorry, can you pause for transition?
Chúng tôi cũng nghĩ là chúng ta có thể nghĩ rằng có thêm thông tin ủng hộ cũng như chỉ trích về cái dự án này. Rồi có thêm thông tin, chúng ta có quyết định được.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Rebus from Councilor's Office. Our office would like to on-record support of this proposal.
Ừ, tôi cũng nghĩ là chúng ta sẽ có cần theo thông tin, nên mới coi cái quyết định chúng, hay quyết cái dự án này.
Um, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, so the abutters who needed the interpretation are not on? Can, can you ask, I'm sorry, can the interpreter ask because they may just not understand?
Ờ, anh có hiểu được, có, có, có thêm thông tin phản ứng về cái, cái chuyện này không à? Yeah, thưa tôi, tên là Hùng Hà, số nhà 38 đường Linden. Đây là người hàng xóm của cái người muốn xây sáu family. Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm, my name is Hong Ha, I'm live in six, uh, thirty-eight, uh, modern and live next to the, the project, uh, of sixty-one London. Yeah, tôi có xin ý tiếng cái hàng đầu, là tôi cũng ở con đường Linden. Nhưng mà tôi không hề nhận được một cái thư theo riêng ngày hôm nay. Rất may mắn là người hàng xóm họ đến nhà tôi, họ hỏi tôi có nhận chừng nào cả to, tôi mới biết ra. Như vậy là cái việc làm đối thương như vậy là không có được chính xác. Lần sau, nghĩ làm thế nào để tới tay cái người hàng xóm để họ biết họ giữ. Yeah, first, first, I, I want to spread that I don't receive any invitation, letter of information about today's meeting. And luckily, I just know that they have a meeting today to another neighbor. And, and that, that really my concern that I don't have the information on today's meeting. Yeah, tôi tiếp theo cái ý tiếng hài của tôi và tất cả những người neighbor hút quan số nhà xã 11 đường Linden, gần như không ai đồng ý cho cái nhà đó xây trở thành sáu family. Bởi vì con đường đó nó quá nhỏ, chật chội. Hiện giờ, chúng tôi đã gặp rất nhiều khó khăn về đi lại trên đường đó, xe đậu trên đường quá chật chội. Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, firstly, uh, my, as, as I know, most of the people here live around the sixty-one London, uh, object to the project because the street is too narrow, too small, and we, we, we don't have the space. Yeah. Bởi vì cái con đường Linden đó, nó gần chợ, rồi gần bệnh viện. Rồi cư dân có hai con đường song song, ờ, gần đó, họ cũng quá chật chội, cho nên tất cả đều dựa đối dồn về trên đường Linden. Đường chúng tôi quá chật chội. So, because we, we live near one hospital and near one supermarket and people need the, the, the Linden Street and they go to the Linden Street. There's, uh, with, uh, a lot of people, uh, trafficking every day. So it's very narrow and we, we feel that it's, it's so, so back to, to, to a small base, space. Okay, and, and can I know thêm điều nữa là, chúng tôi không đồng ý cho cô đó xây sáu family bởi vì, chúng tôi hiện giờ đang, mỗi lần buổi hè là cái đường Linden, chúng tôi không ai chịu nổi. Bởi cũng người Việt Nam bắt đầu từ hai giờ chiều cho đến nửa đêm, là họ mới ca ra "okay", rất là ồn, chúng tôi đã chịu không nổi. Bây giờ sáu family nữa thì lượng người tan lên thì cũng đang ồn. Như vậy thì chúng tôi không thể sống ngưng tỉnh đường này, cho nên chúng tôi phản đối. We object to the, the six-family, uh, building project because, you know, in, in this small way, we already have a lot of noise from other neighbor. They have, uh, karaoke, they have all the noise-making noise. And now, if we have more six-family in that way, we, we cannot live with that. So we object to the project. Cô mà xin sáu family đó, tôi nói với cô đó, tôi yêu cầu rằng nếu mà cô bảo đảm về nhà cô có đầy đủ bát kim cho những người ở trong nhà đổ xe thì, nếu mà người trong nhà cô mà đổ xe sang về đường đó làm cho chật chội ra thì chúng tôi, neighbor hút có quyền gọi xe đã thô đi được không, thì cô đó cũng không chịu. Như vậy là chúng tôi thấy tôi không đồng ý. And, and a lot of point that we, I, I asked the, the owner of the building that if you have a, a six-family here, you need to ensure that they have enough, uh, parking space for six people and not park on the street because we don't have any, uh, space now. And if, uh, they space, uh, park on the street, we, we will tow to, to that, uh, for a car on, of the, the new family. And you agree and, and she, she did not agree. So we, uh, we, we decide to object to, to this, uh, project.
All right, thank, thank you. But are there other questions from the board?
Câu hỏi nào, câu hỏi nào?
I have a question, Madam Chair. I agree with the BPDA recommendation about the massing that is appropriate, but the required of open space is very limited. So my question for the proponent is if you have considered reducing the number of parking units. I wonder thinking that if you reduce the number of parking from six to three and you rotate the parking, you, you will be able to create a lot more open space and probably a better, um, site setback. So have you had any conversations with the BPDA about that option?
Yes, thank you.
Cái câu hỏi của tôi là dự án có đã đánh giá thêm cái việc đổ cái đầu xe chưa? Đó là câu hỏi.
Yes, I, I appreciate the, the question and yes, um, just, just on the site plan. We, we do have, uh, an improved site plan that shows the green space, um, and some of the improvements that we did in response to the neighborhood and to the Civic Association. Unfortunately, we were not, uh, we didn't meet the deadline, the fourteen-day deadline to upload, um, the newest site plan. But the site plan, but to the parking question, I think originally we had proposed seven units of parking. When we went through the process with the neighborhood and the Civic Association, there were members of the association who asked us to reduce the number of parking. So I believe we went from seven, uh, parking spaces originally down to five. And with the reduction of the two parking spaces, we, we were able to, uh, increase the, uh, the, the green space on the site. With...
Chúng, có, chúng tôi có lưu tâm về cái vấn đề đổ xe. Dự án ban đầu, chúng tôi là bảy chỗ, nhưng mà bởi vì những yêu cầu về tăng cường không gian xanh thì, thì chúng tôi hiện tại còn, còn năm chỗ. Và chúng tôi, với cái bản, bản, bản vẽ mới, chúng tôi sẽ cấp lốt lên cao, bởi vì cái hàng đầu này đã qua.
Now, with, with respect to the, the, the abutter, you know, with respect to the abutter, we went through a very long two-year process that had several staff from the, uh, the ONS office. And we went through about three meetings, uh, with the Fields Corner Civic Association. We did try to address, um, the issues and the concerns of the neighbors. Uh, the biggest issue that we did address was reducing the number of bedrooms from three bedrooms down to two bedrooms, uh, which basically went from eighteen bedrooms to twelve bedrooms. At that point...
Tôi, tôi cũng với cái dự án này đã kéo dài hai năm và chúng tôi có hợp hành được nhiều lần các ủy ban, với những yêu cầu của dân cư xung quanh. Và chúng tôi đã điều chỉnh dự án rất là nhiều, từ ba phòng ngủ cho xuống phòng hai phòng ngủ. Tôi thấy là, ừ, số lượng phòng ngủ đã giảm rất là nhiều.
Sorry, were you still speaking, the applicant?
No, no, I think I'm finished, madam.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other questions from the board?
Câu hỏi nào, câu hỏi nào?
Hearing done, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice. I, I'm not comfortable voting on it as is, as there's been updated plans that the board has not seen. I wish the applicant had requested a deferral, but I think they also just need more work to do.
Tôi, tôi phản đối, bởi vì tôi cũng không có cảm thấy thoải mái về những cái dữ liệu mình đang có và tôi nghĩ là cái người nộp đơn cần có nhiều việc phải tìm chỉnh hơn nữa.
Is there a second?
I agree with Katie's, uh, suggestion, second.
Tôi đồng ý với bà, bà thì làm việc gì.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Tôi đồng ý.
Yes.
Tôi đồng ý.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Tôi cũng đồng ý.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Tôi cũng đồng ý.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Tôi cũng đồng ý.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Tôi, 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 tôi đồng ý.
Thank you. Okay, uh, thank, thank you to the interpreter. We're on to the next case.
Yeah, thank you.
We've passed the eleven-thirty timeframe for, to start rediscussions. Um, if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the eleven-thirty, uh, timeframe, would you let us know, please?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, 10 Thompson Square, please.
Okay, so that would be case BOA 1304433, with the address of 10 Thompson Square. Um, would you go ahead, attorney, and complete the slide?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranty, I'm an attorney with the business address of 3... My name is George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Sing Ming Chan in this matter. Madam Chair, we have had deferrals in the past on this to allow for updated plans. It had been our hope that with revised plans, that the recommendation of the BBDA might be updated and be more favorable to the project. That has not occurred. My client in assessing this and in recognition of the fact that BBDA is not in support of a building that exceeds three stories, what my client would like to do is ask for one final deferral and then taking that into consideration, redesign the building and hopefully getting to a point where the BBDA can be supportive and represented to the community and also hopefully gain community support for a revised, a revised building.
Thank you, Mr. Marancy, how much time do you need?
At least a couple of months, Madam Chair.
Okay, Samantha?
Madam Chair, if you're looking for a couple of months, we can do June twenty-fifth, July sixteenth, however far the applicant thinks they need.
Certainly nothing later than that June date. If there was anything in early June, I think that would work, but whatever works best for the board's calendar.
We can do June fourth or June twenty-fifth, Madam Chair.
June fourth, I believe, will give us adequate time to get the revised plans in a review by ISD. And that's probably the best date in terms of engaging with community process before the summer begins.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion, both, so I don't think June four.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. See you then, Attorney, Marancy.
Thank you.
Unless there are any other requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the eleven-thirty timeframe, we will return to the eleven AM hearings. Next, we have case BOA one-five-five-zero-six-seven-one with the address of one-twenty Park Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain? Case to the board, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Anthony Ross, attorney for the applicant. My office address is at three forty-three Belgrade Avenue in Rosendale. My client is Dr. Realty, consequently of owners Sean Murta and John O'Malley. The subject property has an address of two-dash-six Corey Street in the Boston Assessment Department records and an address of one-twenty Park Street in the Inspection Services Department records. But in any case, the building wraps around the corner of Corey Street and Park Street with existing entry doors on both streets. The building formerly housed the Masonic Grill Restaurant and a commercial business. The proposal is to convert the building to five one-bedroom residential units with no change to the size of the existing building or its footprint. On the site plan in front of you, the building is, the building identified as Lot C on the corner of Corey Street and Park Street. Each unit in the, in the proposed residential reconfiguration of the building would contain first-floor living space of between five hundred and three and seven hundred and ten square feet, including kitchen, dining room, living room, bedroom, full bath, and in-unit laundry. Each unit would have basement storage area accessible from the unit itself and from the common area. The proposal includes four off-street parking spaces. Two of the parking spaces that were proposed would be tandem parking spaces utilizing the existing curb cut on Corey Street. And two of the parking spaces would be to the rear of the building accessible.
Can you please mute? Can the ambassador please mute non-panelists? Thank you, please proceed.
Sure. The only change to the exterior of the building would be to reface the building with new siding and awnings and replace the entry doors and windows per the plans. As I said, the lot is almost completely occupied by the existing building. It is because of this condition and the proposal to repurpose the existing building that the proposal lacks required open space. I reviewed with my client the BPDA recommendation that open space be increased to two hundred and fifty square feet. And my client has indicated that he will be willing to work with the BPDA in the design review process to create the requested open space, including if necessary by reducing the proposed parking. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the Google Maps and the properties to the left and right from this property are three-floor height. So what is the reason, just out of curiosity, what is the reason your project didn't intend to increase density or go higher? And at the same time, give you the opportunity to create more open space if you go higher on the scale?
Yeah, my clients are proposing to repurpose the existing building and not to put a second or third-story addition on the building. And because of that, because it is a single-story structure, there's no opportunity to add balconies. But after reviewing the BPDA recommendation, we think that utilizing this, the portion of the lot that is not occupied by the current structure, likely parking space labeled, parking space C, we think we could create the two hundred and fifty square feet that the BPDA recommendation is requesting.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Ben Tyack from the Office of Neighborhood Services. And a Butters meeting was held for this project on Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, where some neighbors had questions about parking and those questions were answered by the proponent. On September, excuse me, on January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, this project passed by a four-three vote through the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council. At this time, the Office of Neighborhood Services defers judgment to the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is IO, with the Office of City Councilor, Brock Morell. In regards to this project, we haven't received any letters for opposition, but we also haven't met with the proponent. And with that being said, we'd like to have him defer for the community engagement.
Madam Chair, may I please answer? Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion with revisals that the plans be submitted to the BPDA for design review and that the proponent increase the open space to two hundred and fifty square feet by further reducing parking.
So to confirm, you're making a motion of approval?
Approval, yes, with revisals, thank you.
May I have a second?
Seconds.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We will, the next case has been deferred. We will move on to case BOA one-five-two-five-two-four-six with the address of one-twelve Richmond Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board, please?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pugini on behalf of Deborah Murphy, the owner of one-twelve Richmond Street in Dorchester. With me this afternoon is James Christopher of Six Eight Six Architecture and Deb Murphy, who is the property owner. One-twelve Richmond Street zoning is one F five thousand, this is a significantly large lot, it's eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-two square feet. This is a proposal to construct a rear addition that will attach an existing two-family residential building at one-twelve Richmond Street to an existing rear barn, creating an attached unit in the rear and the changing occupancy from two to three units. This design was done in consultation with the fire department. So it's really about building code and why these buildings are attached. The proposal represents an adaptive method of adding to the housing stock in the sub-district without adding new buildings to the lot and to the neighborhood. The unit mix will be, there'll be unit one, it will be in the basement of the first floor of the existing structure. Unit two will be on the second and third floor, this is the existing structure. And unit three will be found in the rear barn. This proposal, we went through a community process of Butters meetings and also appeared before the Lower Mill Civic Association. There were about, I think, fifty people in attendance and I think it was forty-nine to one in support of the project, including the director Butters, including Senator, former Senator Linda D'Assina-Forey, who lives directly next door and she's in full support and I believe has written a letter of support. And I just want to point out to the board that nothing is changing here. We have an existing barn that's in the rear of this property and it's just a connection that will bring it in there. So we're able to provide another home without changing the character or the context of the current neighborhood. At this point, I'll turn over to James Christopher to walk through the plans, but I appreciate your time this afternoon.
Thank you, John. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of Six Eight Six Architects with the business address of Ten Forbes Road in Brantry. If you get onto the SK drawings, that will go to the floor plans. This is just the existing plans, it shows the existing house and detached barn. Up to SK one. There you go, thank you. So the intent here is to create currently the existing house, which sits towards the front of the property. Through the key plan here, it's pocheted in pink. And then the barn is to the rear, which is currently detached. If you look to the rear of the, the top of this plan on the right, you have the first-floor plan. There's a bedroom and a bathroom and that is where we are making the infill to connect the barn. The first floor will be, the basement will be unit one, it's three beds and three baths. And it's approximately two hundred and ninety, two thousand two hundred and ninety square feet. Next slide, please. Unit two is a three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath, nineteen-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot unit on the second and third floors. As you come up the internal stairwell to the second floor, you have living space with decks on the driveway side and the front of the property for some open space. And then on the third floor, we have two additional bedrooms with some attic storage. Next slide, please. And then this is the third unit, which is the barn. We have nice porches on the front and driveway side of the barn, which matches the aesthetic of the front building. The barn unit is three-bed, it has four bathrooms, and it's two thousand three hundred and fifty-four square feet. There is an existing partial basement, we will not be using that, it will remain as-is. Next slide, please. And then that's the second floor of the barn, which houses a bathroom, a sitting area, and two bathrooms, a sitting area, and two bedrooms. And then the eve space in the roof plant. This is the building in elevation, the left side is the existing house, the right side is the barn, which is set well back. All of the space to the, to the barn will, in front, will remain green space with a walkway to the rear portion of the barn. We illustrate the porches and the dormers here, next slide, please. This is the right-side elevation when facing, you can see the, the, the front and side porches. In the middle portion of the building, you see there's a small stairwell there that leads down into the basement, which is the common access to the mechanical rooms. And units two, unit two has some storage down there as well. This is our rear elevation, showing the porches on the barn and second-floor porch of unit two, it stares down. Next slide, please. And this is the driveway side of the elevations, where you can see where the roof steps down is the infill where we attach the buildings. And then you have the barn to the rear with the porches. Next slide, please. Here's our building section. Next slide. The barn section. And then just some additional sections. I think that's it. So with that, we'll turn over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, are there any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a zoning question for Mr. Hampton, if he's still on. Is he out there?
Mr. Hampton?
Yeah, I'm still here, Ms. Weewell.
Okay, so we've gotten a few of these and I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So it seems like the ADU is, you know, definitely a policy initiative, but it, it seems to me it hasn't, the zoning ordinance hasn't quite caught up to that. So I got confused when I've seen references to like three single-family dwellings on one lot. So can you just confirm that with me that there is no sort of ADU reference in the zoning?
Depending on the neighborhood.
Okay.
You know, there is a movement for ADUs in the city. It hasn't been adopted citywide by zoning commission. The most recent ones, there've been a push for them in Matapan, which has ADUs allowed. This is not in Matapan. And then one of the issues, as you know, even though it doesn't apply to this particular one because they are actually connecting the two, they have issues. There would normally be two dwelling units on say lot because they're in two separate buildings, but this is just really connecting, you know, two buildings and it's a three-family. It's not an additional dwelling unit by definition of the code. It will be coming soon for adoption by the zoning commission for citywide. But right now, a lot of people use the moniker ADU. And I know we've actually used it on other occasions where carriage houses were being converted and there were standalone where we say that this would be a great case for an ADU. We've even used it in our recommendations. But right now, there are no citywide provisions that apply outside of Matapan.
Okay, and just, is, because I mean, I think to me the difference is whether it's accessory to the uses on-site. So is there any sort of limitation on like having three separate condo units here? Or is it sort of unacknowledged and instead of being quote accessory?
Yeah, I can get you that information so that you can read, you know, what determines an accessory dwelling unit versus what is a change to a three-family? Because there is a definition out there that sets a specific threshold.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's helpful.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, calling anyone with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. It's time the Mayor's Office could defer to the judgment of the board. Our office has received twenty-two letters in support of this proposal and reportedly the local civic association from this area has indicated they have no stance. I believe that would be the Lower Mill Civic Association. With that, we defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Ramesh from Council Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to on record support of the proposal.
Madam Chair, nobody speaks. Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second? Second.
Sir.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
The following case on the list has been heard. So that takes us to case BOA one-five-four-two-six-five-seven with the address of five forty-eight East Third Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board, please?
Hi, Mr. Stenbridge, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good morning, almost afternoon. Mike Ross on behalf of the applicant attorney at the law firm of Prince Lobel, with the owners of the property on the call here, Sean Nally and Ryan Berger. Let me just see what you have here, we're on the refusal. So I wonder if the next slide can bring us to the plans. So Madam Ambassador, should be, oh, yep, that would be the right one, okay, good, thank you. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is, was before you November first, two thousand twenty-two. We were denied without prejudice. This is a revised plan based on the impact we... or the comments we received from the board. What we're seeking to do here is build a, there's an existing one-family on this site. And what we're seeking, and it's a multifamily sub-district, we're seeking to build a three-family structure with a recessed fourth floor. The earlier version, as I mentioned, was denied. And then also a reduced parking of just two parking spaces as opposed to three parking spaces. This new project will have two bedrooms with one bath. Each of them are 976 square feet. And the top floor will be a one-bedroom with one bath. And that's now 827 square feet. And then just stay on this profile page, the second order. As you can see, the bay initially, which overhangs onto the street sidewalk, initially was up all the way to the fourth floor. And now the bay itself was cut back as well and brought down just to the second and third floor. And then that top floor used to be a two-bedroom. It's now a one-bedroom. Next slide, please. These are the floor plans. On the left, you'll see the two-parking space garage. On the middle and right floor plans, those are the two-bed, one-bath. And you see the bay sits to the front on East Third Street. And then the back, there's a deck off of each unit, which is about 5 by 20, approximately 100 square feet off the back of those two units. Next slide, please. And then that third unit there on the left, a smaller unit now. It is setback from the street. As you can see, the bay protruding from below. It also has that small deck off the back of the unit, approximately 100 square feet. And then on the right, you can see the section of the building. You can see kind of a generous height on each of the floors of nine feet, eight inches. There's a small little skylight on the roof to allow for natural light to come in into the stairwell. Nothing else is on the roof. Next slide, please. Just shows the front elevation of the building. The garage is a 10-foot-wide garage. You'll note that there's no windows on the side of the building. And then the next slide will show you the rear yard and left side of the building elevation. Again, no windows. And we can go back to page one, Madam Ambassador, just, or the first page of the Architect Act, just to go quickly through the zoning relief. So this is a 1,279-square-foot lot. We're at 2,000-square-foot lot as required. It's a short lot, which is part of the reason why we're here before you, requesting relief, or shallow lot. It also requires additional lot or dwelling unit of 1,000. So we were cited for that as well. The FAR that's shown here by the architect is actually, it's not 2.9. The architect included the basement, included the garage. The garage would normally be removed from the FAR. So it's really a 2.17 FAR, which still is above the 2.0 FAR, but much closer. For open space, this area requires 200 square feet per unit. There is 60 square feet per unit, but then each of the decks are 100 per unit. So, you know, you do have those decks. Not to say it's the same, it's just raw open space, but worth mentioning. The setback, so we have a front setback. We are in a district that requires a three-foot setback. I'm sorry, five-foot setback, and we're at three. But a modal would bring us probably where we are right now. We didn't do a modal analysis. We took the front yard setback instead, since we knew we were coming here. The setback side is, requires three feet in this district, but we're at .5, although I mentioned there's no windows on either side. So that three-foot setback off the side yard, really without the windows, isn't necessarily necessary. The rear yard setback is, again, this is a shallow lot, so the requirement would be 15. We are at 11 inclusive of the decks for the rear. And then this, we were cited for parking. Normally, there would be four required parking spaces on this site. We now have two in deference to the comments we received. And that also was triggering a maneuverability to access the 10-foot garage door. And finally, I think you're aware that in an area where the previous building was shorter than the allowable height, which is 40 feet for this area, which is our height, 40 feet, the new building triggers the old building's, Article 68, Section 29. They also have this in the north end. It's just a South Boston thing. I'm sure you've seen it. So we recite it for that as well. Finally, Madam Chair, we received three letters of support, which we passed on to the counselor's office and the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. Applause there.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Looking at the first floor plan with the parking, that space to the left seems a little tight. Would there be sort of two parking spaces with this project that are sort of deeded to the units? And who would get that left space?
Yeah, it's a good question. The goal here is to do for sale condominiums. So, you know, unless they come up with some creative sharing mechanism through the condo association, most likely they would be deeded with the units. You know, not everyone has a car. Not everyone brings a car. Not everyone wants to pay for the car. So, and that was the feedback we got from the previous board. We did show three. One was granted a tandem, but we're now showing two. And, you know, that was a direct kind of reference to the 2022 board.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, it seems just like a tight configuration.
Well, and it's tight, and that's one of the reasons why we got maneuverability. But, you know, 10 feet width is very common for curb cuts, for example, throughout the city on very large projects, too. So the city generally doesn't like you to go too wide on the parking access either.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Ross, I believe you have to create a new curb code for this site.
Correct, Mr. Valencia.
Have you had any conversation with BPDA about opening this curb code since we'll remove one of our street parking?
Just through the community process, we've identified that as something we're going to have to do. So it's known to the Butters, it's known to the community, it's known to the city. We would have to go to, you know, pick and go through that process. We will be removing two spaces off the street in exchange for a 10-foot curb cut. You know, we think in the end, it's a good value proposition and generally what this community wants, because there's a requirement for 1.5 parking spaces for every unit in South Boston. So that would be 3.5. You can't have 3.5. You have to have four. So now you're talking about four units for this. You know, so we went to two units, two parking spaces. But that is what we'd be required to do here.
Yep. Thank you.
And how does your height compare to others on this sort of several blocks? Because stories-wise, yours seems to be generally higher than most.
Well, if you look at, you know, down the road a bit, and if, you know, if you follow Google streets, you'll see that there are a number of these four units. There's one directly to the left of us, four, I'm sorry, four-level lots. Most of the lots build out right to the edge of the property line. And I would suspect have a larger FAR than what we have here. They seem to be less, more massful. This seems to be less massful than the other properties that are either existing or recently built on this block. And then there are some larger properties directly across the street from us and in the immediate area.
Mr. Hampton, do you want to share your recommendation from BPDA?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, BPDA. Again, when it comes to knocking down an existing structure, we're looking for open space when you put up a new one. As you've seen, our theme for denial without prejudice over the past couple of hearings and even today, that's one thing that we're really focusing on, is that if you're going to knock something down, try to adhere to the open space as much as you can. So we are recommending denial without prejudice just due to the massing of the building and the open space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just respond to that?
Sure.
Just to say that this is a shallow lot. It's only 57 feet long, and it is in a multifamily district. And the only way to get multifamily housing, you know, to replace any one-family unit, is to go as far out as you can to create, you know, the volume for the building, which we've done with parking as well as outdoor space, the decks, in order to allow people access to their space. And plus, there's still a little bit of a yard in the back. It's not giant, I'll grant you, but it's over five feet. And it provides a little bit of yard out there as well as what's beneath the deck. So, I mean, we're really trying to make this lot work without being excessive. That's why we pulled back the volume of the building. Our FAR is very close to what's allowed. We're at 2.17 and 2.0. So, you know, we're trying to work with the regulations of this sub-district.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
I have just a quick question. So, Mr. Ross, did your client ever explore more living area on the ground floor instead of parking, like another unit?
Um, yeah, no. So, I mean, it didn't come up. I guess I would say, Ms. Weewell, the issue would be that there's a strong demand for parking in this neighborhood. And I don't know if we could do anything meaningful on that ground floor in terms of combining, say, parking and living. Just have the smallest of, I mean, the building itself is 48 feet, I believe, maybe less. I'll pull up here in a second. But it's just, it would be very hard to get all of that in there, the parking in. Now, we could get rid of the parking and do housing, but I don't think we'd be here today. I think we wouldn't have passed the community process. We would have gone through this. There's just, it's another trade-off.
Thank you. Let's open it up to public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. It's time the Mayor's Office could defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. In the latest iteration, that Butters meeting was hosted January 4th. During that time, some concerns were raised by Butters regarding parking as well as what they perceive as not enough open space. Another topic of conversation was the size of the rear decks, which the proponent mentioned they could potentially use a divider to mitigate some of those concerns. The Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association voted to remain neutral regarding this proposal. And our office, as of last night, received two letters in support from the Butters and so far, no letters of opposition as of last night. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura from Council of Flin's office. Council of Flin would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and support letters from A-Body neighbors. Council of Flin respectfully requests that the team continue to work closely with neighbors on any quality of live issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no reason to ask.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Okay, Madam Chair, I want to make a motion. I think this project can work. Still, BPDA can help the proponent to make some changes in improved parking configuration or parking my new way. I cannot say that word.
My new way.
Well, that word. But anyways, my motion is to for approval with BPDA's design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
I'm actually going to vote no. I just, I don't think the lot size lines itself to the two cars on the ground level and maneuverability.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
I'm going to vote no. I want to be consistent about lot sizes and how I view this.
The chair votes yes, but the motion does not carry. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair, do you have a full board today?
We do not.
We do not.
I was unaware.
Which I announced earlier, but had not had occasion to re-announce. Is there another motion?
So I'll put forward a motion of denial without prejudice and hopes that applicant can do some more work and come back with a different project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, reconsideration, just for this brief moment and point of order, if I may. I was unaware of the board's size. Would have taken the administrative deferral. I apologize for not raising that early. I did raise it, but then, you know, you went forward with the motion. I would just ask that you consider a motion reconsider to allow for administrative deferral that would allow me to come back, having addressed the issues. And again, I was unaware. I came on at around 10:30, 10:15. There was no announcement. I think that there's, you know, some shared duty for me to count the heads, but also for that announcement and to give me the opportunity to avail my clients of their rights. So respectfully, I'd ask if you'd consider a motion reconsider to vote for an administrative review.
Samantha?
Madam Chair, that's up to the board. I mean, it has been advertised that this is a six-member board, and it has been consistently a six-member board all day.
It has.
Longstanding frequent flyers know that six members is not a full board. So that decision would be up to you and the board, Madam Chair, how you wanted to proceed. Or you could keep the motion as it is, since the board has made a motion and voted unanimously on motion. But that is up to you and the board.
I will give the person who made the motion an opportunity to change their motion, but concur with Samantha that this has been advertised as such. It is listed with the members who are present today. So, Ms. Weewell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to stick with the original motion. Thank you.
And so that is the decision of the board?
Thank you.
That, we will move on to...
And so let that be a reminder that this is indeed a six-member board and has and will continue to be all day. Sorry, Mr. Stenbridge.
That's quite all right, Madam Chair. We'll move on to case BOA 1524057 with the address of 363 E Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Cedarwood Development, David Winnick and David Matteo, owners of the site here at 363 E Street in South Boston. This is within an NFR multifamily residential sub-district under Article 68. Madam Chair, members, some members may remember this address. 363 E Street was an Article 80 small project. This is about half of that site, which was approved for a four-story, 24-unit development in November of 2022. Unfortunately, an Butter filed an appeal of that decision. My client subsequently abandoned that application. This is an application involving three parcels, approximately half of that original site. This site is 3,648 square feet. What is proposed is a new three-story, four-unit dwelling building. The slide that's currently up is showing the site plan of land with the newly proposed building. If we could go to the next slide, please. Rendering of the building at the intersection of E Street and Bolton Street, Bolton Street running up to the left. And what you can see there is the changes in the... Bolton Street running up to the left, and what you can see there is the changes in the architectural rhythm of the building to break it up and give it the appearance of not being a single structure. Next page, please. Aerial view of the site and just some photos of the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide, please. Again, aerial view of the site. That's St. Vincent's Church across the street. The building that's currently on the property was a parish house, long been abandoned. St. Vincent's closed. It was de-consecrated many years ago. My same clients actually received approval for a residential redevelopment of the church building in construction with the November 22 approval of this site. Next slide, please. And we can go to the next slide as well. That's also a site view, sorry, a site plan. There's the existing structure, which would be demolished. Next slide, please. So this is the site, a post-four-story building. Parking garage would be entrance. Entered from the Bolton Street side of the site. There's no parking on Bolton Street. There, we can see the rear yard setback. That is landscaped. Next slide, please. That is simply the basement, which is utilities. Next slide, please. The first floor of the building has a main entry on E Street, a gym, bicycle storage, and then the eight spaces in the parking garage, as I mentioned, access from the Bolton Street side of the site. Next slide, please. Moving up to three-bedroom units on either side of the vertical circulation corridors. Next slide, please. And upper stories are also three-bedroom units. These are bi-level units. That's the third floor. If we move up to the fourth floor, we'll see the upper levels in a recessed fourth-floor level of the building, providing for additional living space for those units. A total of four units, as I say. Next slide, please. Front elevation on E Street. Next slide, please. Side elevation on Bolton Street and then a Bolton Street context plan with the abutters on that side, the Bolton Street side of the property, which is to the rear, in this case. Next slide, please. And just elevations showing what was previously depicted in the renderings. And I think the rest of this is simply rendering. So if we scroll down, you'll just see different views of the building in rendering form. With respect to zoning, Madam Chair, this is virtually zoning compliant. There's no use violation. There are no dimensional violations, but for exceeding the height of the building existing on the lot that would be demolished. This is a feature of Article 68, Section 29 of the Code of South Boston Article, whereby any building existing on the date of the, in this case, the amendment back in 2017 that is demolished, a new structure on the site cannot exceed that existing building's height. The existing building was approximately 30 feet. This building is proposed at 39 and a half feet. Otherwise, the maximum building height in an MFR sub-district in South Boston is 40 feet. So it is under, actually, the dimensional table height for a building. The FAR is 1.97. This violation attributable to exceeding the height of an existing building is not a variance standard. Rather, it's a conditional use only. That is the only relief being sought. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS held a Butters meeting on January 8th. The meeting attendees appreciated the proposed green space with the trees as well as a part of this project. There was some concerns raised over the sidewalk extension. Butters asked for a construction management plan to manage traffic during construction. The proponent responded to those concerns. The St. Vincent Lower End Neighborhood Association indicated they had no objections to this proposal. As of last night, our office received no letters of support or opposition. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the board. Laura Toldafer, Council of Flynn's office. Council of Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process, positive feedback for neighbors on the parking afforded in the project, and the same visits Lower End Neighborhood Association, who also reported no objections. Council of Flynn respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with neighbors, A-Butters, and the civic group on any quality of life issues that may arise during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is mine, Herr Prue, for the Carpenter Union. Would like to go on record and strongly support this project.
No additional raise counts.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll put forward a motion for approval with proviso that the plans we submitted to the BPDA for design review and appears they need to address some considerations raised by the Disabilities Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
We have one more case before a break, so I hope our Article 80 applicant will work with us on that. Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes, that, the, actually, Article 80 and companion case, first being case BOA 1563602 with the address of 1188 to 1194 Bennington Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1563606 with the address of 1200 to 1208 Bennington Street. The applicant and/or their representative is present. Will they explain to the board, please?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, GBW Incorporated. With me is also Nick Landry from Design Resource Team, who's the project architect. And to your comment, I hope this one is much more straightforward than past Article 80s, Madam Chair. If we could jump right down to Slide 4, I can do a quick overview. Madam Chair, members of the board, this project abuts the MBTA room line and is less than 100 yards from the entrance to South Downs T Station. We propose to demolish an existing commercial industrial building and replace it with two new TOD mixed-use buildings, which will contain a total of 40 residential units, with 17.5% of those restricted under the city's IDP, with a maximum of AMI of 70% for six of the units and 100% for one unit. There will be a total of 20 parking spaces, some bike storage, ground home retail, and amenities space. So we can jump back to Slide 2 quickly. Because this will have a gross floor area of approximately 49,000 square feet, this project does exceed the thresholds for an Article 80 review, requiring the proponent to undergo a small project review. We have diligently participated in that process with BPDA staff as well as the community. We've done that for the better part of the last two and a half years, Madam Chair. And we did conclude that process ultimately last fall. At the conclusion of that process, and although not required since more than 45 days have passed since the filing of our small project review application, we did obtain Article 80 certification from the BPDA on November 16th of last year. Jump down to Slide 5, please. So just a street view from Bennington Street. You can see the existing, mostly one-story existing commercial building. As I said, this is used as the base of operations for GBW, which operates a construction company out of this site. The site itself is over 27,000 square feet, and we propose obviously to demolish the existing building, the two-story building off to the left as well. Next slide, please. Different view. We can probably go one more slide after that. This is just a view looking down Bennington Street. For context, this is located, the Orient Heights section of East Boston is close probably as you can get to the river border. So pretty distant area of East Boston, but somewhat of an emerging area where the number of projects have been approved in the immediate vicinity. Next slide, please. Before we get to that, I'm going to hand it over to Nick Landry. We just jump back to the zoning slide. For Slide 3, I can run through the zoning analysis quickly, and then I'll let Nick just talk a little about the building program. So currently, and again, I apologize to the board if I sound like I have broken record on these. We are in that transitional phase between a BPDA recommendation for Plan East Boston, which has been adopted by the BPDA, most recent amendment being adopted a few weeks back. Current Article 53 does not permit multifamily use. It would limit the FAR to 2.0, the height of the building 35 feet, and also would require parking at the rate of two spaces per unit plus anything for retail. Planning Boston recommends changes to the Saratoga Street EDA, which essentially, once adopted, would actually make this project by right. I would point out that the changes under the new zoning would allow for multifamily use in the EDA. We do not have any requirements, as is currently the case, for lot size, lot width, front yard or side yard. However, we do provide side yard on the left of about 45 feet and on the right of about 10 feet. With respect to rear yard, currently, a 20-foot setback is required in the EDA, but however, we are able to take advantage of the shallow lot exception because the lot is less than 100 feet in depth. That will continue under new zoning, so the 10-foot setback remains compliant. With respect to floor ratio, the new regulations of the EDA actually increases the maximum MFAR to 2.5. We are compliant because we are at 2.25. Height, probably one of the most significant changes in the EDA is increase for this area up to 65 feet. The number of stories we are proposing is at six. There is a maximum number of five stories that set forth in the proposed amendment to Article 53. However, where projects that propose to add additional four-story housing above the IDP requirement are eligible to add an additional story, and when Nick walks through these plans, it's a very small area that goes up to a sixth level. Last but not least, I would point out the minimum parking. The change under new zoning is that minimum parking will be determined in connection with Article 80. So in this case, because we have worked with the BPDA at Article 80 process, the number of spaces would be deemed to be compliant, provided the certification allowed for that number of spaces. I would also point out for the board, I know we bring this up a lot, lot coverage and lot permeability in the EDA is not regulated as it is in other districts under the new Planning, Spots and Recommendations. However, we do have a substantial amount of permeability on the site, which doesn't presently exist. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Nick Landry to run through briefly the building program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of his presentation.
Thank you, Richard. Nick Landry from DRT, we're the architects on the project. I think, can we start on Slide 11? You could scroll down just a little bit. So the, this is the site here, Bennington Street along the front of the rendering here. The building on the left-hand side, we've been calling Building A. The building on the right-hand side, Building B. And in Building A, there's 22 units with a retail space along the ground floor, some bike storage areas along the ground floor as well, and a gym for the occupants of the building. Building B has 18 units with, again, some retail space and some amenities space on the first floor. Can we go to Slide 13, please? So here's the proposed site plan. You can see Building A on the left and Building B on the right-hand side, Bennington Street along the bottom, and the MBTA tracks along the rear of the site. All the way to plan left, Building A is a bike storage room, which we'll get into in a second. And there's also some parking along the backside of the first floor that's going to be accessed by a curb cut all the way to the right-hand side of the site. There's a break between the buildings. You can see the landscaped area. And there's going to be landscaping proposed all along Bennington Street. We're going to be cleaning up the sidewalk and complying with the visitor parking for bicycles as well. You go to Slide 15, please. Here's just an enlarged plan, kind of showing that bicycle parking area that's all the way to the left of Building A. It's shown in the violet in the plan view. We'll have parking for about 60 bikes for residents and 10 bikes, 10 for visitors. Go down to the Slide 18, please. Here are the elevations of both Building A on the left and Building B on the right. Building A, as Richard had mentioned, is a total of six floors. And you can see it kind of, it steps, the floor plates get smaller as you roll up. The top floor being the smallest, the height of about 65 feet. And Building B is a four-story building that's roughly 54 feet in height. You can see the materials in both buildings relate, but they're applied a little differently. We can go to Slide 20. So here, the intent was to break up the facade of the building with a few different material types, but using some materials that read kind of like a cedar shake or cedar shingle. It'll be a synthetic material. We also used some standing seam metal and some composite siding on the lower floors. And the view to Boston is actually kind of down plan. So the angle, the angles you see on this facade, kind of angle that view toward the city skyline. If we go to Slide 21, please. And again, this is Building B roughly. We're using similar materials, so the buildings kind of look like a cohesive project together. And the intent, again, is to use something that kind of mimics a cedar shingle shape look along with some brick and there's going to be some standing seam as well. And I think Slide 22 is just an overall rendering of the entire project. So you can see Building A and B from a couple of different angles with that landscaped area in the middle between the two buildings. And I think that's it, Richard, if you want to.
Thank you, Nick. I will pause there, Madam Chair, to see if there are any questions or comments on the board that we can address.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions from the board? All right, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. This proposal went through an NTBP process that involved two community meetings. The applicant then went out to meet with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council in October of 2020, it looks like. The group voted to oppose. The project, one in favor and 38 opposed, citing feedback regarding what they feel is not enough parking based on the amount of units and as well as concerns with the height. As I mentioned, though, this went through a full BPDA process with two public meetings. That will defer to the board. Thank you.
You. Okay. Sebastian?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ben Chumpire from Council of Polite's office. This time, the Council would like to go on support of this project, being that it's in line with planning Spots and Specs as part of a Saratoga Street EDA. Thank you.
Thank you, mine.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is mine, Herr Prue, representing Honduras Union Carpenters for East Boston. Glad to go on record in support of this project. GBW has been a longtime partner of the Carpenter Union. Thank you.
And I have no additional raise counts.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
I'm open to approve with continued BPDA designer reviews.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll take a 15-minute break.
Recording stopped.